Councilman Knight.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Here.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker.
Here.
Doitrich.
Present.
I'm in, present, or here.
Bullock. So you're.
Here.
And Miller.
You know.
Okay, great. This time, item number four is the approval of minutes of special call to committee of the whole, it's a regular scheduled committee of the whole and a regular scheduled city council meeting until August 10th, 2020, and emergency city council meeting until August 16th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Question made by Councilor Joyner, seconded by Councilman Walker. Is there any need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask a city clerk if she will call the roll for a please vote.
Councilman Knight.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner, Walker.
Yes.
Doitrich.
Yes.
Bullock.
Yes.
And Miller. Councilman Miller, we can't hear you when you do.
Yes.
All right, earlier, the city council voted to suspend the project with the LGC and to hire a independent council to advise, provide assessment process forward in that action. Second, I would like to ask, are there any additions or deletions to the intended twice agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. So that brings us to item number five, which is the committee update by our city manager, Michelle Ace Wilton.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor and members of council. First, congratulations are in order for Director Will Deaton and the Development Services Department for recently earning a pair of awards from the North Carolina chapter of the American Planning Association. Development Services was awarded the Marvin Collins Small Area Plan Award for the department's planning and programs regarding the Atlantic Avenue corridor study. The Great Transformation Award was received in recognition of the retrofitting and re-energizing of the Rocky Mount Mills development. Now, I would like to also welcome new additions to our executive leadership team. Beginning Monday, September 21st, Abdul Baylock will serve as the city's chief internal auditor to Baylock Department. While W. Gregory Cotton will assume the role of chief technology officer. Joel Dunn, who has served as interim parks and recreation director since January 2020, has been promoted to director of Parks and Recreation. His promotion is effective immediately. These men have 50 years of combined experience in government service. All are proven leaders and I'm confident that each will contribute to improving our organization. Visit rockymountnc.gov for more of their biographical information. Thank you, and I hope, and I'm certain that you will have a wonderful experience in Rocky Mount. Welcome. The two of you, newest members are certainly look forward to continuing to work with Joel Dunn, who has been with us for several years. I won't say how many, but several. So congratulations to you with the review.
Welcome, ma'am.
The Rocky Mount Fire Department has also earned a pair of recognitions as well. In August, the North Carolina Insurance Commissioner and State Fire Marshal Mike Causey announced the fire department had completed its routine inspection and received an improved rating. The department was formerly a Class II and has now achieved the highest rating of Class I. Higher ratings can significantly lower homeowners' insurance rates in that fire district. In addition to the increased rating, earlier this month, the department retained their international accreditation from the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. With its recent upgraded public protection class rating and retention of accredited status, Rocky Mount Fire Department is in the top two tenths of 1% of all fire departments in the United States. Congratulations Chief Mercer and the Rocky Mount Fire Department for your ongoing commitment to keeping our community safe. And I hired him as fire chief. Had to throw that away. The City of Rocky Mount's Business and Collection Services Department is working diligently to address any concerns customers might have as a result of the recent network disruptions. Customers should note the following. The city is working to put billing cycles back on a normal rotation. Customers may receive bills that reflect a shorter due date or billing cycle. Thanks to the city council's ongoing moratorium, there will be no utility disconnections and late fees will not be assessed. Bills are being mailed to customers and all payments are being processed. Please contact the call center if you are unsure of whether your payment has been applied to your account. For your convenience, all three lanes of the drive-through service are available. Due to a high call volume regarding billing and payment concerns, customers might experience longer than their normal hold and wait times. The system customers use to view their e-bill account is being upgraded and customers will receive a paper bill until the platform is upgraded. And again, I would like to emphasize that there are no late fees to be assessed. If you find that on your bill, it certainly is a error, but I'm told that that is not being communicated on bills and there are no disconnections. The OIC continues to hold COVID-19 testing sites at the Rocky Mount Event Center. Those tested will need to bring their photo ID at an insurance office. Insurance is not required for testing. Testing days are Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Registration can be performed prior to arrival by logging on to oicrmhub.com. Call 252-210-9856 for more information. The September city council newsletters were recently released. If you would like to sign up for the newsletter from your own council member, email communications@rockymountnc.gov. As a reminder, you have until the end of September to fill out and send in your 2020 census form. The census will determine funding for housing programs, schools, hospitals, economic development, and much more in our community. You can respond online, by phone, or by mail. For more information or to respond, visit 2020census.com. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Brings us to item number six, which is presentations and recommendations. I would like to proclaim the month of October 2020 as the community planning month. The city of Rocky Mount presents William Deaton, the Director of Public Services, for board read this. All right, so this time, I would like to recognize North Carolina Chief Service Commissioner, who will recognize the Rocky Mount Fire Department for attaining the insurance service office class one rating.
Mayor, it's an honor to represent the county. It's a blessed two things. One, the fire department's reputation, which is one of the top four in the state. And this makes number 10, the state of Rocky Mountain, out of the world. I'm a customer of this, a career job. It's a big deal. We send it right now. I think we've got all the citizens in our country. And my guess is that we've got a bit of our development and business that we're trying to make. It's just an honor to represent the United States and the nation. The way you did, by the way, you keep on the walk, so probably, and see, do the law, have you completed your plan off this, 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 and that?
Congratulations, Chief. Okay, that brings us to item number seven, which is petitions from the public. I'd like to remind everyone that the petition, public petitions portion of the city council meeting is an opportunity for public comment, and the city council appreciates your attendance and thanks you for expressing your views and opinions. The city council values all citizen input. This is an opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer a matter to the city manager or staff or follow-up. Time will be monitored or give everyone an opportunity to speak, and speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that signed sheets must be presented to the security officer prior to the opening of petitions publicly. If an organization or group, recognized group is present to speak on a common issue, please designate one person to present the group's comments. If your comments are in regard to an item that is the subject of a public hearing, please wait until that item is introduced to speak. Time will also be monitored. If your comments are in regard to an evidentiary hearing, additional time may be granted. The city council requests that you please adhere to the following guidelines. Leave a signed sheet, just comments to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. Speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have the potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated and will be asked to sit down or move from the meeting. Keep comments to three minutes. Thank you. First person I have is Bob Norman.
Good evening. My name is Bob Norman. Today, we are one day short of four months since the state audit was made public. Their findings highlighted by the $47,704 in unpaid utility bills by a current council member. What have we heard since from the city? The city manager has said that she has, she now has the business service department reporting directly to her. Kind of sounds like what Mr. Charles Penny, our former business manager, was having done. Another note was that no way the audit could arrive at the figures that they said they came up with. I spoke, as I said in my last appearance before the council, that I spoke twice with Ms. Wood, and she assured me the records are here for everybody to see. One councilman said, and I quote, "Let's stop looking backward, let's look forward." So I guess that means let's not be concerned about the $47,704 of utility bills and $28,000 that was awarded to ineligible recipients, one of which is another council member and another a utilities official. State Representative Sheldon Willingham, who I also spoke with, said, and I quote, "This audit process, report and report, has been a major distraction from moving our city forward." He further stated, "The state auditor's office should bring a speedy in through their interference with Rocky Mount economic, social, and political well-being." Really? So I guess corruption doesn't matter to Mr. Willingham. Lastly, since being elected to the city council, the councilman in question has been paid approximately for 17 years in office $295,000 in salary, and that does not include an annual per, or personal expense allowance and car allowance of approximately another additional $178,000. So ladies and gentlemen, that's about almost $475,000 that this gentleman has been paid, yet could not pay a utility bill. That's a bad precedent to set. Perhaps Ms. Lynn Wilkins said it best when she wrote a letter to the Rocky Mount Telegram several months ago, and she referenced from the Bible, the Gospel of Matthew, which simply says, "No man can serve to masters,"
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
"where either he will hate the one and love the other, or else he will hold one, hold to the one and despise the other." You cannot serve to gods. Thank you very much.
I'd call to the podium Clint Williams.
Good evening. I'm here to address three issues connected to the cyber breach of the city, including the breach of personally identifiable information, putting residents and customers of the city at risk, and a connection to the North Carolina State Auditor's findings from this meeting. Number one, the cyber breach has been proven to show that the city's mitigations of vulnerabilities are woefully inadequate. In addition to a CTO, congratulations for fulfilling that seat that's been open since 2018, the city needs a CISA, that is a Chief Information Security Officer, and should implement practices such as penetration testing, employee cyber education, and significantly enhance digital policy controls, access reviews, and system updates. How long will this take for it to happen? How long will you make good to the customers, the citizens of the city, that your improvements have been made? Because you owe to them to earn their trust. Number two, it has been confirmed, validated, that the hackers have released and posted unredacted, unencrypted, personally identifiable information on the city's customers. This includes non-city residents, such as those who have natural gas in Nashville or water services beyond the city limits. This personal data can be used to validate addresses of victims and enhance a hacker's profile of customers to perform account takeovers from bank accounts or other identity theft activities. It is out there. It's in the public. People's PII has been violated. And as illegal as the breach is, as incredibly embarrassing for the city that it has exposed this PII, it also reveals that the North Carolina State Auditor, North Carolina Treasurer, and possibly the Attorney General and FBI needs to further investigate this city council's corruption and conflicts of interest. Exposing the breach is proof, proof that a city council member and his parents, and his parents on Wellington Drive have not paid their utility bills since at least 2014. How many other family and friends of this council have improperly benefited from special favors and conflicts to the tune of thousands of dollars? Because you know what? I got proof, just like she do. Every single member of this body over the last 10 years needs to be investigated, and any adjacent family and friends who have had large written-off power bills or other bills from the city needs to be brought up on charges along with any council member and a redress of all monies not paid, in essence stolen, restituted to the taxpayers. Anyone who has been a party to this corruption, at least as far back as 2014, should be fully investigated, audited, and the results fully made public. For shame that we now know the depths of depravity. Many have assumed that this city has now been
Thank you.
accused of. It has been confirmed.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
I got proof, like she.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, I cannot read the first name and say Mr. or Mrs. Stith or Miss.
Are you ready?
You're ready when you are.
Okay, good evening. Thank you all for allowing me to speak for three minutes. Some of you are aware of this, wanted to bring total attention to the fact that Project Momentum, along with Twin Counties Partnership for Healthy Communities and Lanell LLC, have received a grant from KP Reynolds to do research on opioid addiction and other substance use and abuse. We have started the work. Want you to know, we will be in the community for two years. The grant is being funded by KP Reynolds Foundation. I will be working with them as a recruiter, along with Tammy Phillips and Michonne and Amber Henson are the ones who will be doing actual interviews. Because of COVID, COVID, we now have to do this, not necessarily face-to-face, but we're doing telephone, Zoom calling, and some face-to-face COVID-19 style, which is 16 feet apart with a mask. Our aim is to get new information beyond just the rates and percentages, but to start identifying what are the root causes of the crisis of opioid, even with COVID going on, we'll see an increase nationwide. So there's a lot, and I want you all to be aware, because these are your citizens, that we're working. We have to recruit eight, we have to do 800 interview surveys. So we will be in the community. Wanted to appreciate those who have responded. I will be reaching out to all of you, plus others in Nash and Edgecombe County. Thank you for your support, your ongoing support, and we will be back with updates along the way.
Thank you. I'll ask Mr. Johnny Cunningham to the podium.
Good evening. Wow. Well, thank the city is burning, totally destroyed. I want to commend you on the beautiful work that's being done to the people. I look downstairs in what used to be a utility payment. You're doing some beautiful work. But I really need this council to put your foot down this time. Because when you disrespect and use this polling, it's one thing to call out Mr. Knight, because he can take care of himself, believe me, but his mother. You have not only crossed the line and total disrespect, disregard, but you have ignited, that's why I'm here today, because when I heard it on the TV station, WHIG TV, that Don Bullock should be held accountable. BB and T, where Kent Williams is employed, should be held accountable for allowing and condoning that action and the vicious lies that he has levered against a woman that I highly respect as my mother. Been known for 30 years. You have done something that's unforgivable. He needs to be held accountable in this council. Cannot, should not, and hopefully will not allow yourselves to be destroyed by vicious propaganda narrative that's only going to benefit white racist, racism. It's time now. When you paint these letters, black lives matter, let's forget about any racism. Let's go back to the original. Because when I came up, I'm black and I'm proud. Black is beautiful, more power to the people. We didn't kneel, and we didn't bow our heads. We were proud. It's time, and the time is now. Racism is going to end when we defeat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. I'd like to ask Mr. Samuel Baal to the podium.
Good evening. In Ward Four, on Martin Street, Lupus Street, 13, 200 block, Paul Street, 500, Bean Street, 600, Cleveland Street, 500, 516, what else? Harris Street, Delsey Street, 519, 516, 518, 520. We have a flooding issue over there. The people, the residents is upset about the water that's flooding in the, in the community. The ditch need to be dig deeper. It's flooding all in, in front of the street in red blood and on Harris Street. The trenches, the coal that's under there is no good. The whole street need to be tore up. So these people in, in that area can live, the water's going on in the yard. It's five different streets are overflowing. The ditch is, it ain't even a ditch no more. It's like a little, just a little stream or something. It need to be dig deeper. People are complaining about that in Ward Four and on those streets. Number two, this light bill situation. We got to take care of this. The city council need to be held accountable for that light bill. I got 84-year-old grandma that paying her light bill for Elva. Elva. I don't care about nobody's mother that, my grandmother paid her light bill. Somebody else's mother need to be paying theirs or whoever. She's 84 years old, just got in the hospital. She still pay her light bill. Number two, Dooley Dixon, stay at 1614 Murray Avenue, Rocky Mount. He got a house on East Grand, 12, 12, 11. In Ward Two, he want the city, the city, the city council to get in contact with him. Because he said he reached out, the city council wanted to, they haven't got in contact with him. He got a house that need to be repaired, and y'all just not reaching out to him. He said the house, the person told him can't get the house repaired because it have no insurance. The man's a Vietnam vet. Respect that. Get in contact with him. He helped y'all down the road years ago. Black Lives Matter. And New York, it cost $6,000 to spend that top class standing out there on Black Lives Matter. Why, why we need 20, why Mr. Cooper Blackwell need $20,000 on this project right here? I just want, I just want to know that. Because nepotism, conflict of interest, all that applies. And I probably accept that you can do that, but in local government, you can't do that. I would love for your lawyer to tell me that. Put him on, put him on front. It's a conflict. You got, you got the NAACP working OIC, you got another councilman in Ward Four working OIC, you got his father working OIC. That's a conflict of interest, man. You cannot vote on something that you giving money to.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
You can't, you can't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
That's against the law. That's a, a felony offense. You can't do that.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. All right, Kayla Knight, Kayla Knight, I believe I'm saying that right. If you please come to the podium.
Hello. I will be speaking on my grandmother's behalf, Virginia Knight. So as to whom this may concern, I, Virginia Knight, was born and raised in Rocky Mount, North Carolina. I am 81 years old and never have I seen racism like I see it now. Growing up, we were segregated, which is true. We had to use separate toilets, water fountains, and had to order our food from the back window of the restaurants. But now there are people that enjoy creating trouble, but never see the good in a person. My family has been targeted long enough, you won't even let my deceased husband rest in peace. Put yourself in our shoes. What kind of message are you sending to the next generation? I have not heard one person talk about the good pastor Andre Knight has done for the city. Let me take you back to 1999, when some smart person opened up the dam and flooded out most of Rocky Mount. when some smart person opened up the dam and flooded out most of Rocky Mount. Andre has opened up his house and let strangers stay as they were at home. He paid the mortgage and utility bills. Fast forward to Mayor Turner's time. Bills that were made fell through profits from that and received checks. That is the reason that Rocky Mount utility bill is so hard to pay. Off that debt, we have more pressing issues before us from then these things. We need to come together and help one another, especially those in this pandemic. Lives, businesses, and homes have been lost. If you can't say something good about a person, then say nothing. I'm looking to live the rest of my days out in peace, love, joy, and happiness. Let's come together and make Rocky Mount the greatest city to live in. Let's draw people to our city and not drive them away. Can we come together and work together in peace and harmony?
Thank you, Ms. Knight.
You're welcome.
I'd like to ask Kayla Darden to the podium.
Greetings to the city manager, city council, mayor, and citizens of Rocky Mount. First, I would like to commend the council for making the Black Lives Matter project a priority so that we can get ready to paint the display in our city. We young people greatly appreciate all that you do to make this city a great place for us. Secondly, I would like to address the fact that Edgecombe County's unemployment and poverty rate is one of the highest in the state. If you've noticed, in almost every, um, in almost every black community, you have the same convenience stores. McDonald's, dollar stores, KFC, ABC stores. We can, we see more obese children in these communities because they have to rely on convenience. When my mom had little to no money, we survived off the dollar menu because she couldn't find a job to get other places for food, or she couldn't afford a vehicle to get to a grocery store, so we had no choice. I understand why the concerned citizens are giving their all to put a stop to this economic development. Why? Because the foundations are being set by black leaders. If Camdenwood Suites Quality Inn and Executive Inn were all that goes on there can stand, what would be so different? This hotel will become a long-term asset to the, to the citizens in Edgecombe County, bringing hundreds of jobs for the unemployed, dropping poverty rates in the future, which will also lead to lower crime rates, I do believe. Let's stop being so stagnated and ignorant. If we really want jobs in our city, stop giving us so much hell and let us bring jobs to the city. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Darden. I'd like to ask Mrs. Nathlin O'Ree to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Nathlin O'Ree, and I'm a resident of Rocky Mountain, North Carolina. And I am here to thank the city of Rocky Mount for acknowledging the death of my mother-in-law, who was ninety-six years young, and thank you all for the nice letter that you sent to us. And I would like to thank Councilman Andre Knight for coming and helping to even be a pallbearer at our funeral. That was so special to me. I would like to thank the councilmen that I have heard and seen passing out food to our citizens. It makes my heart so warm. And Mrs. Smoltoni, an ex-employee of the city of Rocky Mount, has such high praises for you for the benefits you have given black employees that were denied them in the past. And I could have cried as this gentleman just praised your great works and the beautiful things you have done to level the playing field. And you're not only fair to blacks, but you're fair to whites too. And I just praise you, council, for everything that you're doing. And we, on the outside, we can't see everything that you're doing on the inside. And standing up here doesn't make your job any easier if we don't have qualifications and money to support you. I wish we could give you all a raise this year, but COVID may make that a little difficult. So we hope you all continue to work for your salaries and continue to do the good jobs that you have already begun. And please continue to work together, because it's a little concerning when single councilpeople put articles in the paper. But thank you, council, for this wonderful resolution. I won't take up your, because you already read it. But it is so beautiful, and I had to come and thank you personally, because you touched my heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Ree. I'd like to ask Reverend Nehemiah Smith Jr. to the podium.
The current commentary and dialogue that refuses to die in our city is a rhetorical bramble that is meant to entangle the accomplishments of Rocky Mount and its leadership in the minutia. Brambles are prickly. They draw blood. However, when the agenda is to steal, kill, and destroy, a death by a thousand pricks is as welcome as by one stroke. Ultimately, it's a three-fifths issue. The council is made up of four three-fifths councilmen and a three-fifths manager. And believe it or not, it's difficult for a hundred percent to be led by sixty percent. But that difficulty is a choice issue. The problem is that the hundred percents are the ones who define the sixty percents or three-fifths. And now when man's inhumanity to man is exposed and on full display across the nation and this world, instead of being repentant, they are recalcitrant. The hundred percents talk about equality, but are unwilling to recognize the other two fifths or forty percent needed to make the sixty percent whole. And so, we get the red herring talk like, pay your light bill, three-fifths councilman, or you can't eat lobster in the state, three-fifths city manager, or questioning the need for economic development in a majority three-fifths county that makes up one half of a majority three-fifths city. The hundred percent want to talk to us about giving a hundred percent patriotic service to a country that still considers us three-fifths and continues to do so a hundred and sixty-three years after Dread Scott. But we have been and continue to give a hundred percent patriotic service, hoping for full inclusion, but still only able to realize sixty percent or most times less. Because of Chief Justice Taney said, "Three-fifths of the nation are, quote, 'regarded as beings of an inferior order and altogether unfit to associate with the hundred percents, either in social or political relations, and so far inferior that they had no rights which the hundred percent was bound to respect, and that the three-fifths might justly and lawfully be reduced for their benefit.'" So now I know why you have a problem within racism. You still subscribe to the three-fifths compromise philosophy. Thank you so much for working with our three-fifths councilmen, you hundred percent councilmen, as we move our city forward progressively. God bless and good night.
Thank you, Reverend Smith. I'd like to invite Bronson Williams to the podium.
Sometimes I wonder if I, being a landlord, knowingly knew that drug dealing was going on on my rental property, would I be found guilty of aiding and abiding, abetting, rather, with that situation? It was seen as though, having a television station drugging this community daily, as a landlord, the city finds itself in through its partner with the partnership, allowing this to still happen in that building. I question the urgency of dealing with that matter, while offering also supplemental support to that particular station, and I assume through that rental agreement. While spreading lies is not a crime, I question the ethical and moral fabric of the symbolism of drug dealing from that station. Looking at the cost to rehab the community from that dreadful drug that that station sprues day in and day out, misinformation, I'm sure the rehabilitation costs would exceed far more than twenty thousand dollars. Which brings me to the end racism mural. The ideal to paint those words on the street shows leadership. Ending racism is something we in America should strive to achieve. On February the sixth, eighteen seventy-one, Edgecombe County commissioners urged their house members and senator not to split Rocky Mount down the line through the tracks. That spirit still reigns true in 2020. We see people from all across state agencies talking about what's happening in Rocky Mount. We see history has shown us that when black people are successful, real propaganda is distributed to divide the community, to continue to put factless claims out there for people to hear. Greenwood, a division near North Tulsa, founded in nineteen oh six, was destroyed in nineteen twenty-one after it was burnt down by angry white mob. Rosewood, founded in eighteen forty-seven, was a massacre that occurred in nineteen twenty-three, again by a white mob. Black success in Wilmington led to the Wilmington riots of eighteen ninety-eight. What I know is that when black success is on the horizon, there are those who will quickly, quickly remind us that we are three-fifths of an individual. I continue to urge this council and members throughout our community to work together to end racism once and for all. We can do that through conversation. We can do that through truly understanding people. And also, I'll end with this. When we talk about the system of trust, Rocky Mount needs more trust and this and that. Certainly, the election showed that there's majority of the citizens in our city trust each and every one of you because they voted you into office. We thank you so much for what you did.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Okay, that brings us to item eight on the agenda, which is the ratification of temporary street closing requests from Truth Tavern Act Association to close the seven-hundred block of Arlington Street and Massillon Street and Red Gate Avenue from twelve PM to two PM on Saturday, September twelfth, twenty twenty, for a community day event. I would like to entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Motion made by Daughtry, seconded by Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk if she will call the roll. Please vote.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller? Councilmember Miller, you're muted.
Okay, motion carries.
Senator, let me just thank everyone for supporting that event. It was definitely a success, the community, faith-based, came together. Thank you, city manager, and everybody for coming out and participating and putting support.
Thank you for that, yes. So very slight of item nine on the agenda, which is consideration of fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget ordinance amendment to reflect the carryforward of funds budgeted for and incurred, but not expensed in fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. The combined total is ten million, four hundred eighty-two thousand and nine dollars. I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Uh, Councilman Blackwell, I made a motion, seconded by Councilman Knight. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk if she'll call the roll. Please vote, we hear your name.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item ten on the agenda, which is the consideration of certification by the city clerk of the sufficiency of petition submitted for annexation number three seventeen dash seven sixty-two, Vestal Road, non-contiguous, and scheduling a public hearing. The recommended action is to adopt a resolution of certificate of sufficiency of petition for annexation, and two, to adopt a resolution scheduling public hearing for October twelfth, twenty twenty, and instruct the Department of Development Services to prepare feasibility study. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Councilperson Miller. Is there a need for discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Councilman Blackwell.
Thank you. Um, I was looking through the document, uh, matter manager. I couldn't find which ward this would be located in. And it's probably because I didn't have my eyes on it. Can you help me?
I'd have to ask Will if he could respond to that question. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. That is gonna be in the southeast Rocky Mount, just south of the southern CSX, I believe. We're working on feasibility study now. I believe it might be in Joyner's, maybe, uh, maybe yours.
If it's near CSX, it's probably.
It's on the east side.
Okay.
Yeah. But we'll have all that information for you coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Is there additional discussion or question? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk if she'll call the roll. Please vote, we hear your name.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item eleven is the consideration of acceptance of an additional five thousand dollars in supplementary support from the Z. Smith Reynolds Foundation for the Black Light Project. The timeframe for the grant has been extended from June thirtieth, twenty twenty, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. No local match is required. Recommended action is to approve acceptance of the additional grant and revise the budget for expenditures. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any required documentation and certifications on behalf of the city. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Councilman Walker, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Daughtry. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk if she will call the roll. Please vote, we hear your name.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twelve is a consideration of inter-local agreement with Edgecombe County for management of funds for the Coronavirus Relief Fund established by the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, or CARES, Act. The city will receive one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from Edgecombe County's distribution from the state of North Carolina to be used for reimbursement of qualifying expenses associated with COVID-19. The recommended action is to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to execute same on behalf of the city. Is there a motion? Motion made by Councilperson Miller, seconded by Councilman Walker. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk if she'll call the roll. Please vote, we hear your name.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item thirteen is consideration of amended and restated electric service agreement with ADI Rocky Mount LLC, formerly Doubletree Hotel, for services six fifty-one North Winston Avenue. Outlines terms and conditions for sale of electric power. Decreases contract demand from three hundred seventy-five kilowatts to two hundred fifty kilowatts. Recommended action is to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Councilman Joyner?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Blackwell. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the city clerk if she'll call the roll. If you'll please vote, we hear your name.
Councilmember Knight?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Joyner?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Daughtry?
Yes.
Bullock? And Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item fourteen, which is consideration of authorizing staff to collaborate with the Rocky Mountain Black Action Committee for constellation of a street mural of Falls Road behind Church of the Good Shepherd, cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Recommended action is authorize collaboration and cost. Motion made by Councilman Knight, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on this matter?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Blackwell?
Thank you. I just would like to clarify the misinformation that was spoken earlier by a citizen who stated that there was a conflict of interest. If I voted on an issue that my son is involved with, my son is a member of this committee, and that committee is not receiving any money. You know, there is no compensation going to my son. And he has the right to be involved in the activity that he wants to be involved in. That's legal. And, um, and there is nothing that precludes my vote from taking place. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Councilman Blackwell. Is there additional discussion or questions? Councilman Daughtry?
Um, Mr. Mayor and council, I, and citizens, I, I agree with this statement in racism wholeheartedly. What I, what I have diff- What I, what I have difficulty with is the twenty thousand dollars from the funds of City Rocky Mount and the citizens to go towards this. I would much rather see this, this group raise the funds to purchase the paint. I think we could approve the public streets to have it painted on, provided that it meets all the criteria and for end racism. I think we could use that twenty thousand dollars, I think was mentioned earlier, to help with having a conversation and opportunities to get to know people, such as, you know, come together as a community and build Habitat for Humanity houses or, or, um, we, we need to come together as a community and have a conversation. And by painting the words, I think is great. Twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And I was on a Zoom call that Councilman Walker had about a month ago, and this subject came up by one of my constituents, who happens to be Nash County Commissioner Fred Bellfield. And if I recall correctly, and Councilman Walker, please correct me if I'm incorrect, that I think the same concern Commissioner Bellfield had was, you know, spending the money when we could spend it prudently somewhere else, that would have maybe a larger impact. I do agree with the, the phrase "end racism." I would, in fact, personally donate to this cause, but I don't agree with giving city funds to, to, to pay for the paint.
That would be my position as well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Councilman Knight.
One, Nash County, stay out of Rocky Mount business, point blank, period. We run our own city. And Rocky Mount funds Nash County through our tax base until that. Since eighteen, what, sixty-seven, we have bought flags, banners, fireworks, wording, all that kind of stuff. You can donate your money and plus, vote on this twenty thousand dollars because it's needed until officers start killing black men in America. It need to be printed in every hamlet, every village, on the mountaintop, in the valley low, until it ceases, until it's eradicated. Our fathers and mothers were hung and murdered, and I support black lives and our lives. This city can spend money everywhere else. We can spend it on something that this city has been plagued with before my time, my mother time, and my father time, and your time. Until we step up to the plate and start bashing our city and get these racist folks who don't want to see Rocky Mount grow, then black lives shall live, and every black man shall live in dignity and honor and respect. I call for the vote.
All right. Call for the vote. City clerk, if you will call the roll and for voting, hear your name.
Councilman Renai.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Dottrich.
No.
Bullock. And Miller.
No.
Motion carries. Okay, item fifteen is consideration for authorizing requests to the North Carolina Department of Commerce, the Rural Economic Development Division, for de-obligation of the Armory Rock Building Reuse Grant, which is three hundred thousand dollars. Recommended action is to authorize the request.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before you ask the vote, I just need to, for transparency and for, I serve on the Rural Infrastructure Authority, which makes these grants. I recuse myself from this vote at the state level because I voted on it back, I think, and I'll correct me if I'm incorrect, back in January or February. I can't remember. Man and manager, he can help me out. But, um, so I just want to make that clear because I know people are paying attention to stuff such as that, but I recuse myself from that, but I don't think I need to do it here.
Thank you, Councilman Dottrich. So I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Joyner, seconded by Knight. All right, seconded by Knight. Is there any additional discussion needed? Hearing none. I'll ask the city clerk if she'll call the roll. If you'll please vote. We hear your name.
Councilman Renai.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Dottrich.
Yes.
Bullock. And Miller.
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to item sixteen, which is consideration for purification chemical contract extensions. Extends contract prices for one year, total cost of one million, three hundred forty-three thousand, fifty-seven dollars and twenty cents. One is liquid ferrous sulfate, Penco Incorporated, three hundred fifty tons, at a unit price of eighteen fifty-eight per ton, for total of six hundred fifty thousand, three hundred dollars. Item two, liquid chlorine for JCI Jones Chemicals Company, one hundred twenty tons at a unit price of five twenty-five per ton for sixty-three thousand dollars. Item three is sulfur dioxide, JCI Jones Chemical Company, seventeen tons at a unit price of twelve hundred dollars per ton for twenty thousand, four hundred dollars. Sodium hydroxide, Univar USA Incorporated, five hundred tons at a unit price of four hundred fifty-three dollars per ton for a total of two hundred twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Liquid calcium hydroxide from Politec, seven hundred pounds at a unit price of fourteen cents, fourteen, no, fourteen cents per pound for a total of ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Dry polymer from Brent Tag, twenty thousand pounds at a unit price of a dollar eighty-two per pound for a total of thirty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. Calcium phosphates from Waterguard, sixty thousand pounds at a unit price of a dollar eighty-four per pound for a total of one hundred ten thousand, four hundred dollars. Sodium hypochlorate, Waterguard ink, one hundred sixty thousand gallons at a unit price of sixty-nine cents per gallon for a total of one ten, four hundred dollars. Nine, corrosion inhibitor from Sterling Chemical, thirty-four thousand pounds at a unit price of seventy-five per pound, seventy-five cents per pound for a total of twenty-five thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents. Recommended action is to approve the contracts and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute same on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Miller, seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion on this item? Hearing none. I'll ask the city clerk if she'll call the roll. Please vote. We hear your name.
Councilman Renai.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Dottrich.
Yes.
Bullock. And Miller.
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item seventeen, appointments. Are there any new appointments that need to be made on this item? Hearing none. We'll move on to item eighteen. I would like to request a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
For economic development property acquisition, attorney-client privilege, I have a motion from Councilperson Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Joyner. Is there a need for discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask for the city clerk to call the roll and please vote.
Councilman Renai.
Yes.
Blackwell.
Yes.
Joyner.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Dottrich.
Yes.
Bullock. And Miller.
Yes.
We're now in closed session.